Sir.
All right, good evening, everyone. Show the time is six thirty-two on June eighteenth. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. All council members are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tyson, will you lead us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come thanking you for this wonderful day. Father God, we ask you to come to the, in the midst of our meeting so as we make decisions that's best for the city of Social Circle. In your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Tyson. Have a list of announcements to make. Most of these are in the community room unless I state otherwise. Obviously, our council meeting tonight at six thirty. Municipal Court, June nineteenth at one P M. Planning Commission, June twenty-fifth at six P M. Council work session, it's combined with our July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Main Street Commission meeting, July nine at eight A M. Historic Preservation Meeting, July nine at six P M. Social Circle Development Authority Meeting, July thirteenth, three P M at City Hall Conference Room. Our next council meeting, July sixteenth, six thirty P M, also in the community room. Presentations, employee introduction and recognition. Do we have anyone?
Uh, yeah. Uh, let's go ahead and go with downtown rundown first.
Okay.
I'm gonna switch it up on you guys a little bit tonight.
Then after this, we'll, uh, we'll bring up chief and, okay.
Good evening. Um, this is the downtown rundown for June twenty twenty-four. Um, first on the list is a brag update. So, as you guys know, um, in my last update, we were gonna host Brag. So, on June third, we hosted Bike Ride Across Georgia um, for an overnight stay here. Uh, I was told that we had around twelve hundred riders that were here um, that stayed at the elementary school campus. Uh, we received so many compliments um, from our visitors about the activities that we had for them in the park and the concert that we had that night. Um, so if you came out, we had a lot of, um, you know, members, citizens, members of the public that came to join them. Um, and I have sent a survey out to all of the businesses just to ask how they profited from having them here. Um, the responses I've received back so far have been really good, so. Um, next on the list is summer concerts. So far, we basically had a concert once a week for the last month in downtown, um, just due to Brag and then, um, the concert series that Deep South Critters and Tim played are sponsoring. So, last Friday night, um, they hosted the Simply Awesome Band in Friendship Park and they were there from seven to nine. And this Saturday, June twenty-second, the downtown businesses will host Pirate Day. This is a cute little event, um, for families to participate in. Kids can dress up in their pirate outfits and get a treasure map and they go around to the different participating businesses to collect little treats and treasures. And then last on the list is our Independence Day celebration. The city will host our annual celebration on Saturday, June twenty-ninth. The parade will begin at five P M and come through downtown. Vendors will be set up in Friendship Park and on Sycamore Street starting at four P M. And then country artist Mark Ware will be in concert from six P M to nine P M. And then, of course, we'll have a break between the entertainment and fireworks start at nine forty-five out at the high school. So, parking will be in the parking areas, all in front of the high school and the athletic complex out there. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, just a comment about Brag.
Yes.
So, you know that we're the only city that they stop at and stop and stay at our elementary school?
Really?
They never stay at elementary schools. They always stop at cap colleges, um, but they stop at our city just to stay at our elementary schools. So, I mean, they're just trying to, you know, for, cause his mother's from here, so they try to come here to share some of the wealth when they're coming through.
It was an impressive setup that they have. I mean, it's, it's very extensive and there is a lot of work that goes into that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, I'll, uh, bring up GPS and then turn it over to you for a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, council members. Uh, as I told you when I first took the job, one of the things that I wanted to do was to go back and look at the history of our department and celebrate that history because right now, if you walk into our police department, there really isn't any accolades towards, uh, people that have been there previous to us or previous chiefs or things of that nature. So, we started working on this probably about eight months ago and as I started going through the items that were collected in the chief's office, I happened to run across something fairly significant. I didn't realize how significant it was at the time. Uh, but I reached out to a couple of people who are here this evening and, uh, we were able to come up with this. Um, what I found in the office was, uh, former Director of Public Safety Steve Shelton's old badge. And what we did was we put this together with the original patches that came underneath his tenure, uh, the one with the Social Circle at the, at the bottom and the one with the Greatest Little Town at the bottom as well. Uh, this is his original badge and there's a funny story about the, uh, twenty-five cent pieces in there. Uh, over time, these badges, the lip on the back of them tend to widen out. So, what Steve had done was he'd shoved that quarter in there to keep that badge solid in the case. So, we thought we'd throw the nickel or the quarter in there too. And, uh, it basically what the plaque says, it says Steve Shelton, uh, Fire Chief nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and five, Assistant Director of Public Safety two thousand and five to two thousand and seven, Director of Public Safety from two thousand and seven to two thousand and nine, and serving the citizens of Social Circle since nineteen eighty-four, which is when he first became a firefighter. Thank you for your help.
Steve, let's, uh, let's get a picture. In front of your family up here. I know, I know they're. Your daughter, here. Y'all come here. We noticed that.
Back, now we gotta come around there.
Come on, Joe.
She, come on, she can. Where's Ken? Come on.
You ready?
Tell him Ken's there.
Well, they want both of y'all to take pictures.
I just wanna get one of the family real quick.
Okay, well, you're one of the, so.
And the council, ready? One, two, three. Got it, thank you.
You gotta get in the middle now, you gotta get in here.
Okay. I don't get any further in the middle.
Hold, hold it in there.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you. I don't wanna leave you all out.
Y'all done, I didn't, I didn't run it out.
Is that right?
That's unusual.
That's awesome.
I knew there was something on the night bar, dude.
Hardly does it keep a secret, does it now?
Oh, wow.
Surprise, somebody didn't sleep in there.
All right, congratulations again, Steve. All right, we will move on to citizens' requests. Um, did have Bob and Mabel Standridge sign up to, to speak. If either of you would like to come forward.
I apologize, I'm recovering from, uh, some surgery and I'm a long way from over, but I'm in good shape. I felt like I should come on tonight. We asked the council, could we speak to them back about two and a half weeks ago when we ran into a, a big roadblock and trying to add a building to our place? And, uh, we were told we couldn't not, that, uh, the council would not, we're not the council of the city. But apparently, a, but, a Band-Aid was put on it. And we do appreciate it and I felt I should come on and tell the council that we appreciated y'all stepping in because we were getting nowhere it appeared with the, uh, people you have on your payroll. I think Mr. Shelton was a big help to that and I personally appreciate it. I would like to give you a little background of what we have seen over the last ten years. We've been working out of this town for forty years this year. And every year it gets harder, gets harder to do business here. And it's, it's just unbelievable to me that, that the treatment we get and when we try to expand, expand our plan, we're told we can't do it. Um, let me simplify a little bit. You've, I'm sure you've heard the name Procter and Gamble. They are one of our biggest, big customers. And we had promised them we would do something in a hurry. We should have checked with the paper pushers here in town before we did that, but we did not. So, we made a promise and we ordered the building and the equipment. Got ready to put it in and we were told we couldn't. We didn't have the right paperwork. So, it was left that way for a couple of days. I will point out to you, the gentleman that, when, when you make decisions, fellows and ladies, you, it, it, it affects a lot of people. The gentleman that always looks over building our buildings, whether they're here or in China or in Czech Republic or whatever, he and I have been personal friends for almost forty years. And because of y'all telling him we couldn't do it, he and I, he and I got into an argument and I don't even remember ever having an argument with that gentleman. But I told him, we're gonna pour the slab and y'all put it where the sun don't shine. And he said we couldn't do that because he would lose his license. So, when you make decisions, they affect a lot of people. Um, let me kinda simplify this. From our side of the co, of the table, and I, I'm telling you what I believe is right. I wasn't at some of the meetings, I wasn't, so I'm, I'm repeating what I was told. But from our side of the paper, the people work for the town are not smarter than the employees of Standridge College. I don't think there's one of y'all that can read a wire diagram better than I can. I, I, I honestly believe that. But you are smarter because you tell us we can't do something because you don't think we're smart enough to do it. So, that's beginning to beat us down pretty bad. I will tell you just so there's no misunderstanding, somewhere along the line, the city council either did one of two things, either lost control of the city or the town or don't care. And I really don't know which it is. I really don't. But it seems from our side of the table that the city council doesn't make decisions because this decision was we can't build the building. And then that decision was changed and I'm not sure exactly what the procedure was. But I do believe that the city council stepped in and helped us. As I say, the rules were not fixed, but a Band-Aid was put on it. And it's very important for us to be able to, when we have an opportunity to pick up new business, to go ahead and pick it up. But I can't quite grasp why you wouldn't let us build this building and we sure don't have time to go into that tonight. But you wouldn't. You said we couldn't build it until we got a whole bunch of paperwork done. And as I just said to you, you told us we had to get a engineer to okay the drawings for the building. And I personally, I honestly believe, I swear to you, I honestly believe I know twice as much as that engineer. But you don't trust us, you trust that engineer. I presume a lot of this comes from the lawyers that the city owns. If I don't get anything across, the city council needs to start making decisions from our perspective. And maybe we're wrong, but when you, it, it seems to me from what we see that lawyers tell y'all you can't do something and you just pass it on. You don't try to correct it, you, you just come to Standridge College saying you can't do this. So, we worked very hard to try to be a good, a good corporate entity here. Um, I, I, I don't wanna read some of this cause I got carried away. But I do want you to understand, we don't think you're smarter than we are. And when you technically come up with technical reasons, you know, not to let us do something, I think you're doing us a disservice. Uh, nothing I can do about it. I'm not stupid. I can't move this plant. It's too big to move. There's twenty-seven billion buildings down there and the first one we built here was nineteen eighty-three. It hadn't fallen down, it's still standing, it's still, as production equipment is, the lights still work and everything. So, why have you changed your mind? You let us do that over the years and now you won't let us do it. So, I don't understand that. And I got to tell you, I was, I, I, I never even met the city planner and I'm sure he's a wonderful human being. But how in the world can a little bitty town like this justify a city planner when apparently that city planner was detrimental in telling us we couldn't build the building? I don't understand that. If you got a lot of extra money, pay your darn policemen more, pay your firemen more, pay your water department more. But don't waste money on a city planner, that's an opinion. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions, I mean? I appreciate it. Come on, Mabel.
Ready, huh?
Yeah, I'm ready, so.
Thank you, Mr. Standridge, Ms. Standridge. All right, we didn't, did not have any other citizen requests, no one signed us. Sir?
We don't need to get into it here.
Yep.
Council request.
All right, council request. Tyson?
Uh, the speed limit sign going down East High Tower from the freeway, can we spray some bleach on it and, and clean it up?
Yes.
Where you can't see it.
Any other council requests? All right, hearing none, I'll move on to, uh, agenda approval. I don't know of any modifications to the agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Steve and a second from Nathan. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have a series, uh, three, as a matter of fact, public hearings to go through tonight. Um, just briefly to, to talk about public hearings, how we'll manage this. Staff will introduce, uh, each one of these hearings as we come to it. Um, after that, we'll ask the applicant, if they want, to come up, make a presentation. That time is limited to ten minutes. You can reserve that time for comments or rebuttals. Uh, then we will ask for those to speak in favor, uh, and then give them ten minutes. Then we will ask for those to speak in opposition and give them ten minutes. That's ten minutes total. Uh, if one person takes all of that time, so be it, but otherwise, it's, uh, you need to manage that time cause we will, we'll hold it best we can to ten minutes. Our first public hearing, uh, Ashley, uh, twenty forty-nine Emily Drive.
Yes, um, this is for, this is for case number, uh, VAR twenty twenty-four zero zero two. Um, the applicant is requesting a variance from section eight point three, point four, point A, point one of the U D C to allow for a commercial vehicle to be parked in residential zoning. Um, this particular property is in, uh, Corby Creek. Um, and nearby adjacent zoning, uh, is R fifteen and PUD. Um, and, uh, the applicant has stated that the vehicle is utilized as part of the applicant's home-based business, um, Cornwell Quality Tools, um, and a separate section of the U D C identifies what types of vehicles may be utilized and parked on the premises of a home occupational business. Uh, and then the section they're asking for a variance from states that no commercial vehicle shall be parked in a residentially zoned district. Uh, code enforcement has been attempting to work with the property owners regarding, uh, multiple code violations concerning the parking of their commercial vehicles since November of twenty twenty-three. Uh, these ordinances are being enforced consistently across all subdivisions and residential areas. Uh, and to date, there have been no other variances applied for nor issued with regards to the parking of commercial vehicles in residentially zoned districts since, um, the text amendment of this section of the ordinance. Uh, currently, the driveway on which the vehicle has been parked, uh, has some cracks in it, um, and there, but there appears to be no serious infrastructure damage to the road as of yet. Uh, as of today, the applicant did apply for a home occupation license. We can't issue it, of course, until, uh, if, unless the variance gets approved. Um, we can't issue the home occupation license, but they won't be able to park their vehicle. Um, they do meet the home occupation standards. Uh, just a couple of things in the staff report in your packet, I do wanna point out, under staff analysis, under A, general consistency, uh, this variance does not appear to be consistent with the intent of the U D C. Uh, and it is harmful in terms of the infrastructure because these roads are intended for residential traffic, not commercial traffic. Uh, we also wanna point out, uh, under special condic, conditions, um, this, this could be granting a special privilege to, um, a property owner that has not been granted to other property owners within the city limits. Um, and we also wanted to point out that, under literal interpretation, this, this would not, uh, the literal interpretation of the law would not allow for this. Um, staff recommends denial of the request. We have an alternative recommendation, if you would like it. Uh, Planning Commission also unanimously recommended denial and the chairman of the Planning Commission asked me to share some of the reasoning behind that. Um, the conditions for granting a variance were not being met by this request. And, uh, the Planning Commission also felt that this would incur, uh, sorry, this would also, um, create a special privilege for one property owner that hasn't been granted to other property owners within the city limits. So, a couple of pictures here of the request, the truck, um, this was an accident, that's, that's talked about in the application, um, the location of the property, um, and then this is staff recommendation, this is the Planning Commission recommendation.
Ashley, you mentioned, uh, an alternative?
Recommendation, yes. Um, staff, uh, if, if mayor and council chooses to offer a recommendation of approval of the requested variant, variance, um, staff recommends the following conditions, that the vehicle must be enclosed in a structure or fencing located in the rear of the yard and not visible from any public right of way. Um, applicant is responsible for infrastructure cracks at the entrance of their driveway and within the public right of way. Um, and the applicant must obtain a home occupational business license within thirty days of approval. They have submitted the application so that, that, uh, condition can be left off at this point.
All right, um, any questions for Ashley? All right, I'll ask the applicant to go, to come forward.
Hi, I'm Heather McCurn. My husband Kevin. I'm gonna speak on our behalf because if anybody knows my husband, ten minutes is probably not long enough for him to make a point, so. Um, and I, I do, I, I speak better from slides, so I just made a quick presentation so that I can stay on track. Um, so the first thing is, I just wanna introduce y'all to, to the McCurns. Um, it's okay, I can do it quick. Don't worry, it'll come up. It is.
Is this the right one?
Mm-hmm.
Do you counsel presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Hit repair and see what it is.
While we're doing that, I got a question for Tony. A variance doesn't bind us in any way to any other piece of property, does it?
Then it could if you give a variance and then someone else tries to reset variance, don't you?
So, what then?
It could set a precedent if you do a certain variance and, and someone else requests the same variance. There's a precedent set.
As you give to one and, and the reason why you wouldn't give it to another.
It's okay, we can go.
Tony told me one time that a variance was by case-by-case application.
They are. But, but in this case, you're sort of doing something totally against the rule. There's a rule and then the, this isn't really a hardship. I mean, maybe hardship for fame, but it's, it's the rule. It's, it's don't park commercial vehicles. You know, and to say, the next guy that comes in and has similar vehicle in a residential place, it's gon, it's gonna be used as a precedent, so if they didn't make me.
It's our look, no worries. All right, so, um, so just to introduce you to us, um, we are the McCurns. We've been married since two thousand and one. Um, we moved to twenty forty-nine Emily Drive in two thousand and four. And we've been, uh, we were looking for a slower pace of life and fell in love with Social Circle and have, have loved living here for the past twenty years. We have resided at twenty forty-nine Emily Drive this entire time. And we are active members, the first back to Social Circle. Um, I'm an oncology nurse at Piedmont Newton. I've been an oncology nurse for over twenty-five years. Kevin's had various positions. Um, he's gifted in sales cause he's got the gift of gab, so, um, those are, that's all kind of where it led us to start our own business. In February of twenty twenty, um, uh, we began a home-based business with Cornwell Quality Tools, like Ashley mentioned, right before this, this happened, right before the shutdown of COVID. His current tool truck, um, if you guys don't know about tool truck business, basically, he has specialty tools, um, pretty awesome, cool things that guys like. Um, and he, his territory is McDonough Stockbridge area, so he drives to that territory every day with this kind of rolling shopping cart for all the great men, um, and, and women. He serves women too. Um, so, uh, the current tool truck is rated for twenty-five thousand nine nine, um, pounds. It does not require a C D L license. Um, the way that it works is his product is shipped directly to him, to the house, that, which is the home-based business part. Um, and the truck resides there to be restocked and inventory on a regular basis throughout the week. Um, I, I, it has been mentioned for a truck to be parked off-site. There's a, we have a huge kind of liability, financial liability with the amount of stock that is kept on that truck. Um, it is video monitored at our house. Um, and even, eve, even if we were able to come up with an option that worked well to park this off-site, the truck would still be at the house every single day for restocking or for inventory. So, uh, it kinda defeats the purpose, I think. Um, so, we get to the kind of, uh, variance part. So, in, as Ashley mentioned, in November, December of twenty twenty-three, we had initial warning from code enforcement um, about the commercial vehicle in a residential, residential area. I, I did follow up and spoke to several, um, code enforcement and Ken Zadel about, um, the Unified Development Code. It was adopted many years ago. Revisions were later made because initially it just said commercial vehicles and then they realized, we, wait, we need to kind of narrow down what does that mean? Um, so, prior to that warning, we had, we did have long-term plans to make renovations to allow for the truck to be parked behind the house. Um, the way that, I had pictures, the way the house sits, um, with proper fence coverage, the truck would likely be out of the line of sight, uh, of the street. Um, so that was kind of the initial thought when we talked to the city back in November, December. Um, when, initially that was discussed, that would, that was told that that would still be a code enforcement because it's over one and a half ton truck, so that would not really be an option to become, to come in and comply. So, we kind of abandoned that, thinking, you know, that's not an option. In further discussion, you know, the variance came up that that was, and that was something we would need, need to pursue. Um, but there was no rush on that. So, honestly, I'm just gonna be honest, time got away from us. And so, in March, um, I guess the beginning of March, we got the certified letter from code enforcement, um, which I immediately called Ashley the next day to pursue a variance on. Um, and again, in discussions with Ashley, the, in city planning, that o, obviously, variance was our only viable option at this point and hopefully to come in compliance with the current code. So, in the city planning meeting, as Ashley mentioned, um, there were recommendations made to apply for a home-based business license, which we did. We would be responsible for any damage to the easement of the driveway or any, you know, city-owned property, which we would be happy to agree to. The last recommendation, again, for allowing for the truck to be parked behind the house out of the line of sight of the street, would require some extensive planning. And again, I had pictures of kind of what what's happening. We had, we do have a side driveway. When you come down and you immediately, kind of if the truck were to pull in straight to the backyard, it's going to be right over our septic tank. And so that would require us to do some grading planning for that. If we parked it at an angle, we have to take the fence out and a bunch of trees, so it's a huge financial kind of thing to take on, which we could do. Possibly do, but when we were asked if we could do that within a month of the recommendations at the city planning meeting, we had to be honest and say, no, we can't do that within a month. That was kind of what the the offer was. Therefore, they recommended declining our variance. So as you saw the truck on its side, that's where we get to the kind of financial piece of it. Unfortunately, on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Kevin had a wreck that resulted in his truck being overturned. By the grace of God, he walked away with no injuries. The truck's been in the shop since March and not expected to be complete with repairs until at least July. We had a significant loss of business and had to take out loans to keep creditors paid for the business. Once the truck returns, he will have significant revenue to make up for the last four months. So money is it would take to make appropriate renovations in one month's time, as recommended, is absolutely not possible with our current financial situation. So we are asking that the mayor and his council consider this variance and approving it for this very unique situation. We've discussed our variance with each of our direct neighbors and several within our neighborhood, and we've received no negative feedback for any of them. The truck has been there for five years. Each have offered no concern with the truck and it being parked at the house. City planning noted that they've never received a variance of this kind, and so there's no precedence or it could, it could could make a precedence. And I would venture to say that this is the very reason that a variance is likely, is as likely the only tool truck. This is the very reason that a variance is needed, as this is likely the only tool truck within the city limits of Social Circle. As this is a unique business and our current financial hardship, we would like for you to wholeheartedly consider approving our variance. Should the council wish to impose conditions on the variance for approval, we'd be happy to oblige, so long as we have enough lead time to accommodate for arranging finances, finances as this is a small business. We'd like to thank you for your time and consideration, and we'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any any questions for Ms. McCurn? Okay. Ms. McCurn, you have
Two minutes and forty-three seconds remaining if you need that time to for rebuttal against.
That's why I wrote it down. I think I said anything on here. I wanted to get in.
Okay. Call a public hearing to order. We did have one person sign up to speak in favor. And that's Matthew Adams. If you'll come forward and give us your name and address, please.
Hey, good afternoon. Matthew Adams, I live at twenty fifty-five Emily Drive. That's on the left-hand side. You can kind of see my house in the pictures there. Normally Kevin parks his truck in the driveway on my side of of his yard. It doesn't bother us at all. I'm here in favor of him being able to keep his truck there. I would just hate to see our community hinder an entrepreneur trying to start up his business and keep it going.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, we didn't have anyone sign up to speak in opposition, but I'll give give that opportunity if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this. Seeing hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
So, Tony, I think we hear what you're saying. We hear what you're saying loud and clear. But can we do conditions that may work for them and allow them some time?
If the combination, you know, a variance doesn't fit with something that is intended to be regulated, is directly sort of on point. But there, but I think the the thought process is, okay, if sight distance is really what the what we're trying to achieve with the ordinance. And so if you were to create an exception to the ordinance that allowed, if you can create a parking pad or a parking place or a building that's outside of sight distance as an exception to the to the main rule, which would apply not just here but everywhere, you'd probably be on safe ground. If you if you just grant, if you just grant the variance without any if you treat it as a variance, really, then it's going to create a hard-to-defend situation. And, you know, this truck is a nice-looking truck. So many commercial vehicles or stacks of ladders and, I mean, you can envision pickup. Don't mean to step on any of them, but it's not what you're trying to achieve with your residential zone, so. Does that make sense?
Anything else?
So I just want to be clear. So if we approve this, does this set a precedence for the rest of the community? Because, you know, I know, like, I've had a situation where someone wanted to park their tractor-trailer in an area and they had to move it. So if we do this, can a person come back and say, hey?
I would if I was driving a tractor-trailer. I I would consider it directly on point. It's not there there, the issue of the variance has to do with personal operational things, not really with the topography or the rule. It's just, you're you're being asked to violate the rule. And and so the, so that does create a precedent. It makes that rule hard for us to defend. I mean, and because we have to, the Constitution requires us to treat everybody the same. So if we're going to have a rule, it's got, if it's a commercial vehicle, if a certain tonnage is our restriction, and then we start allowing them just in a certain place, we've violated the Constitution. And and there, that rule's going to fall, is what it amounts to. If we create an exception to that rule, and that that is, hey, we're really just trying to keep these large vehicles outside of the sight distance, and the person who has the tractor-trailer can create a driveway around the back of his house that that hides the tractor-trailer, then he doesn't need a variance. He can follow that exception to the rule and park at his house, too. Which if sight distance is really what we're trying to achieve, that rule works fine. You know, people can park commercial vehicles as long as they're out of sight. And and, you know, and other conditions that, that's really we're, I think we're all saying the same, we're talking in the same language. It's just, this isn't really a variance. A variance, just a variance in this case creates a violation of our rule, makes it questionable to enforce it. To create an exception to it is certainly a very logical and maybe even a more constitutional way to enforce the rule because you, government needs to be the least restrictive they can in the way they create their rules. So if there's a way to do what you're trying to achieve, which is not see the vehicle if you're in a residential area, and and you grant an exception if that can be achieved by the property owner and that rule applies to everybody, then you've got a better role from a constitutional standpoint.
So does that mean that you, that in order to move forward, we would need to change the ordinance to say line of sight, or?
Yes, you would. Yeah.
It's not a variance issue, it's an ordinance issue.
Yeah.
So we could change, so we could change the ordinance and say that out of sight, basically out of sight, out of mind, and it can't be a CDL-required vehicle.
Currently, currently, the the reason that they're asking for a variance, currently the ordinance gives exemptions if you can get it non-visible from the public right-of-way, but because this truck is over one and a half tons, that's the reason they're asking for the variance. The weight is is the key component here. So if it was under one and a half tons and they could get it out of sight distance, we wouldn't be here.
Gotcha. So then you would need to change the ordinance to
It's the tonnage.
Yeah, to a different tonnage in order for it to make sense.
Yes.
Okay. In order to change the ordinance is another public hearing, correct? Yeah, okay. All right. And so in the meantime.
Can you give them a variance for a short period of time till they can do what they need to do?
I think I'm hearing
Or can you?
But he's saying he can't.
We shouldn't do a variance. We should
Change the ordinance.
What I'm asking is, what alternative besides a variance to give them the time to be able to do what they need to do to get it out of sight?
The The change of the ordinance.
Yeah.
That's going to take two months.
I'm talking about not changing the ordinance, but give them time to get it out of the line of sight.
Right.
Without having to do all that to get them in compliance right now.
You you have a five-year period where this rule hadn't been applied. And if that's the, if that's the direction you wanted to go in, then I would just give that instruction that we want to, we want to move in that. We want to, we want to, not a variance, but we want to change the tonnage requirement and give that assignment, and in the interim, we do not want this enforced until we get that rule looked at.
It would apply citywide. I mean, I know, I know of a of another tractor-trailer that's in town, probably not the same one that Ms. Price was talking about.
Stays at my house, in front of my house.
I mean, there's another one, there's another one that I know of that's in a neighborhood that I think would
All of those are going to be hard to enforce.
Yeah, it would be, we would be able to enforce those, and we have tried, and we have been enforcing those.
But could the, in those opportunities, could they have it in the back of their house where it'd be?
In some cases, no. In some cases, they don't have backyards.
Well, then
And there's one, there's one, the neighborhood I'm thinking of is Meadows.
I think I'm more into out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah.
If they can't get it out of sight, out of mind, that's unfortunately a variant. Is how I look at it.
And what do we consider out of sight?
Like behind the, if we go in the back of the house. So if you ride from the main road, it's not like you visibly see a a tractor-trailer or or something like that. Because I know Ken has issues with one of my neighbors in front of me all the time parking his truck. But I mean, if he could go to the rear of the house, you you really wouldn't, you wouldn't see it. I mean, he has enough room to go to the rear of the house.
My next question is, as I understand, we're talking about a twenty-six thousand pound commercial vehicle. What's the difference in a driving motorhome that's twenty-six thousand pounds?
What about a school bus?
What?
What about the school buses that they're parked in front of the yards all the time?
It's classified, right? Building classified recreation vehicles.
Right, so this part of the ordinance has several different classifications for different vehicles. Obviously, school buses are civic vehicles, so those those don't count as commercial vehicles. RVs fall under their own type of deal, motorhomes, even pull-behind campers. Those are recreational vehicles, so they have their own separate governing section. The commercial vehicles, they're we we recently shored up some of that language because a commercial vehicle was defined as anything with advertising on the side or a company's name on the side, so even a Prius with a company's name on the side was a was a commercial vehicle. But again, the reason this variance is before you guys is because it's over one and a half tons. But this one doesn't require a CDL. So if if the direction that's given is to change the ordinance, we could qualify it by CDL, non-CDL, something like that.
I think I think that would would stiffen, keeps the tractor-trailers out.
Well, it's going to take a tractor-trailer anyway because a tractor-trailer is eighty thousand pounds and this is twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-four ninety-nine, just under a CDO.
What about having Tony restate, I mean, to change the UDC public hearing for planning and zoning and this, the council, so that's too much process.
That's correct.
We're looking for a way to give the McCurns the right to do this. What if our attorney restates exactly what you said and we adopt that by reference, because I think you explained all the things too much, as I should be.
You can't adopt that because it has to go through zoning procedure, so it has to go through Planning Commission.
So all we could say tonight is not to enforce the current ordinance for us to have time to be able to review and alter them.
But if that's the way you go, I think you need to put some kind of ceiling on it so you don't open up the city to tractor-trailers and unintended consequences.
Okay.
So anything under anything that doesn't require a CDL?
I think that'd be
So not to enforce, not to enforce the, the, whatever the code number was, eight, three, four, eight, one on vehicles under twenty-six thousand or twenty-six thousand pounds for a period of time. Yeah. But now, let me ask you, Tony, so knowing financial hardship and, you know, if we got this run-through, planning and zoning next month, and then it came to us the next month, that's two months. And then it goes into, you know, the ordinance. And they still can't do it in two months.
We could change, we could, we could extend their time for to allow them enough time to create a way to get into the back of the driveway after that point.
But that's, you would do it at that point, not now.
Well, you need to establish a time now. Give it, give it some time, whatever that time is.
We, it's time to get the ordinance done. So we need to come up with a date time certain if we're going, if this ordinance change will happen.
The the advertisement deadline for Planning Commission for July has already passed.
So it'd be August.
On August.
So it'd be October earliest.
September.
Oh, sorry, September. I skipped a month, yeah.
So what's the wait?
It would be until September, the September meeting of Mayor Council.
The vehicle wait.
Oh, it's twenty-four ninety-nine. So I think twenty-five hundred is a CDO.
Okay, so so it's
Anything under twenty-six oh one, if you don't want to have CDO.
So it would, it would simply to be, put a moratorium on enforcement of of the commercial vehicle standard for any vehicle twenty-six oh one or less until this ordinance is reviewed by State Council.
That's twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
But we we deny the variances in front of us.
Say what?
We, the variance that we're looking at, that's denied. And then do we bring that in, or? Because we're not, we're not doing the variance.
Based on the conversations that we're having and and what I'm assuming is the intent, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but my my recommendation has evolved now. I would recommend, still recommend denial of the variance, and then, as Tony stated, you guys can put a moratorium in place on enforcement.
That's what I'm getting at. We have to deny what we're looking at.
Because that's when the public hearing is over.
Kevin, you have two minutes and forty-three seconds.
Well, I was just going to tell you, I'm all about getting in compliance based on the plans of getting the truck out of sight and out of mind. The only thing I was going to add to that, I had a master plan that, and I was kind of telling other people about it, about putting a six-foot white vinyl privacy up to the corner of the house, coming down, and then getting the truck in the back. And I will be able to get it to where you cannot see it, and that was my goal all along before any of this took place. Me and Heather were already planning on moving my business to the back because it's in the garage now. The issue that we have is obviously financial hardship because I've got to make up for three months of lost income from my truck being in the shop. I had to go pay cash for a trailer. I've been bleeding, hemorrhaging money. And so, you know, everybody in this place can drive over and look at my backyard, look at my front yard. Everybody who knows me in this town, I keep my front and my back. And I try to make a nice place. I've made my own little heaven, and I don't want to leave it because of interest rates, and I love my house. But I do need the truck there. But long story short, I had a very expensive kind of, I know it's going to be around fifty. I got a clear cut. Now I got more sun in my pool. There's a lot of good thoughts and plans of just making my house even nicer because that's what we all want. At the end of the day, we all want our home values to go up and have a great little town. That's all I was going to say, but I don't really know the cheapest way to get it back yet because I've got to get with the environmentalist, the person who put in my septic to kind of see the plat of where we could place everything. So I don't even have a full plan yet because I have the financial hardship. I may have to get a site engineer just to see where we could place everything. But I'm ninety-nine percent certain it can be done because if there's will, there's way. My time is up.
Not exactly, Kevin. You still have fifty-eight seconds. Okay. All right. I have a motion.
What order would we need to do that? We would need to deny the variance and then that, or opposite? Okay. Okay, all right, then I'll make a motion to deny the variance and then call for a moratorium on the variance for commercial vehicles under twenty-six thousand and one pounds um, or less, a moratorium on that until we can review the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve, is there further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
All right, uh, show Ms. uh, Ms. Price in opposition. That motion passes. Next, uh, next up, we have, um, eight fifty-three East Hightower Trail. Ashley.
Yes, Susan, may I have the, uh, PowerPoint backup, please? Um, so just to start, um, this is, um, uh, the applicant is requesting a rezon from business to light industrial to satisfy combination plat requirements, the, um, if if you look in your packets, um, there is a proposed combination plat, um, and approximately two point three acres of land would be combined to allow for the quitclaim deeding of the adjacent parking lot, um, and this is for insurance purposes. If you could make it bigger so I can highlight where where we're looking at. Yeah, thank you. Um, so if you can see it up there, tract one A, that is the only portion that we're talking about rezoning. So everything else on this plat is zone light industrial, but we can't approve the plat because of that little business piece, um, that's two point three acres. Um, staff's recommendation is to approve the request to rezon from business to light industrial, the planning commission also unanimously recommended approval. In your packets, you can see, I'm sorry, um, my P's are extra loud, um, the, in your, in your packets, you can see the, uh, different maps have the two point three acres, uh, outlined in red, so you can kind of see exactly what we're talking about rezoning and everything else around there is light industrial. And like I said, this is just so they can move some property lines around and get their parking lot on the right property.
All right, are there questions for Ashley? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing, uh, ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor. Seeing hearing none, anyone to speak in opposition. Seeing hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Make a motion to accept planning commission recommendation.
Second. All right, got a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson, is there further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. That one passes unanimously. Item number three, uh, one sixty-two West Hightower Trail.
Okay, this is a request to rezon from R fifteen to business to allow for, um, some retail and commercial uses, uh, within that house. Um, we pulled the, uh, drawing of the house from from the property taxes, um, and you can see the site just off of West Hightower, um. A lot of people also think this is one sixty-two Clark Avenue, um, but the address is off of West Hightower. Um, the surrounding zoning, as you can see, uh, the blue is O and I and the yellow is R fifteen and the red is business. Uh, the character of this area has been identified as central historic, which includes business as an appropriate zoning designation, so this request is in line with our future land use map. Uh, the developer would also need to address the drainage issues on the property as there is currently a drainage pipe in the rear of the property that goes across the road and drains onto West Hightower Trail. Uh, there was no parking or traffic plan included as part of the application, so the developer would need to address and meet parking requirements as outlined in section eight point three point six of the UDC to include the, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act or ADA requirements as well. Uh, the proposal is for the dwelling to be converted into three separate spaces of operation, so three separate uh, commercial or retail tenants. Uh, the developer would need to reconfigure the water and sewer for the location to include the additions of meters and taps. Section eleven dash twenty-nine of the city's code of ordinances state that only one customer is allowed per meter, so each tenant would be required to have their own meter. Uh, the change in occupancy will also require the structure to meet a new set of codes and standards as it would no longer fall under residential use. Um, so they would definitely have to work with not only the building department, the plan, uh, the planning department, but also the fire marshal's office, uh, extensively as well. Uh, just to draw your attention to a couple of things under staff analysis, um, under B, compatibility. Uh, the proposal does not appear as if it would have an adverse effect on the usability of adjacent or nearby properties, however, there is a concern that with no traffic or parking plan in place, there could be an in increase in traffic congestion, especially during the drop off and pickup times of the neighboring schools. Um, staff recommends approval of the rezon request from residential fifteen to business with the following conditions. Um, that, number one, the drainage issues be addressed and approved by the public works director prior to any COs being issued. Uh, and number two, plumbing for the sewage is to be reconfigured to include the addition of meters and taps at the cost of the developer, or the developer must receive written permission from the city to have one meter for multiple cu- multiple customers prior to any COs being issued. Planning commission, uh, unanimously recommended denial of the request from R fifteen to business.
Can you give a little feedback on why?
Yeah, absolutely, um, based off of the internal zoning comments that you guys have in your packets from the different department heads that are addressed in the staff report as well, uh, the planning commission felt like it would be a burden um, to have this space converted into business. If you look at the zoning map here, I wish I had a laser pointer, um, it would, their their comments were it would be different if all of the residential properties on that side of West Hightower came together and wanted to go into business, but because this one is the only one that's wanting to be rezoned into business, it creates kind of, um, an odd placement for for that business zoning, so that was some of the feedback that the planning commission gave, um, along with the the worry about the traffic, um, and everything like that.
Okay, any other questions for Ashley? Okay, thank you. All right, um, is the applicant present?
She is.
You wanna come forward, Ms. Sora?
My name's Dana Sora with Macklin Investments, I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you tonight, um, and I apologize, I was not here for the planning and zoning because I had a medical procedure, so, um, Ms. Debbie had stepped in for me, so I do wanna clarify. Um, we are looking to do something along the lines of like Sherwood Forest in Covington that has a florist as well as they sell other items, it wouldn't necessarily be three different, it would all be under one entity umbrella, Sweet T Enterprises, and we thought it would be nice to offer something like that to the communi- community, uh, because it is and does go along with the future land use, um, with the adjacent business in the rears and almost across from the post office as well as the O and I where the school exists, um. We do not have an issue, um, addressing the sewer or the water issue in the back, we didn't create it, uh, we realize it's there from previous work that was done, I'm not sure who, by the city or whomever, but we do know that that would need to be addressed, definitely. But, uh, we're just looking to bring something to the community versus a rental property and would like to, um, you know, have a nice little florist, um, you have other homes in the area, you have, um, the real estate company, uh, you have engineers, you have, uh, the home beside Blue Willow, um, and down the corridor, a couple other homes, so we really didn't feel, when we presented this, uh, we thought it would be a little bit more welcoming and we didn't feel like it would be a, you know, a burden to the community, but more of a help, so. I'll save my time for rebuttal, once you have any questions.
Uh, parking and traffic, real quick, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, um, I had, we didn't, haven't done a traffic study, obviously with the school there, and I know the new school's in the process of being built, that'll eliminate some traffic, our parking would be off of the Clark Street area, of course, um, you know, in the rear, but, um, you know, everybody has a difference of opinion, so, uh, I know coming through school time, it's a little hectic, but I think it would be nice to have, um, a li- a florist, you know, in the community that offers little boutique gifts, things of that nature, but we'll leave it up to you guys.
Any other questions for Ms. Sora? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, um, Dana, you had signed up to speak in favor? I'm assuming your your statement is speaking in favor?
It is.
All right, um, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing seeing none, uh, those wishing to speak in opposition, we do have two people signed up for that. Uh, Adrian and Makin Ogletree, if you'd like to come forward, please. Please give us your, uh, full name and address.
Adrian Ogletree, two five nine West Hightower Trail, we've been here in Social Circle since nineteen eighty-seven, we live in one of the historic homes there. This is not a good idea, we have, I understand the overlay is looking at having commercial at some point is what I understand, your UDC, if that's the right initial stands for. Um, there are two residences next door, they both, um, are not in favor of it, I don't know where the lemons are tonight, I think they had a disconnect and I thought I had their phone number.
They had something about, um, those great four.
Oh, okay, and, um, the Crawleys, and so I think Social Circle is known as Georgia's greatest little town, but I'm very concerned about we need growth and I appreciate that we need different businesses, there are empty businesses ups uptown. There are other places along Highway eleven that have been businesses, the Myrtles, which is the building next to uh, Blue Willow, was originally the offices for the Blue Willow, and it, that has all been vacant since twenty twenty, since Blue Willow shut down, and I don't know what the people who bought that, there's places in the Blue Willow Village that are vacant. So there are other places that are already zoned commercial that are available. Um, the traffic is hideous, we cannot get out of our driveway already in the mornings, um. It it's in the afternoon too, it's just terrible with the traffic, but one of the concerns is, um, that the lawyer was talking about earlier was precedents and we, I counted ten families on West Hightower between the traffic light and the library that probably within the next five years, it sounds sad to say, the people are either gonna die or move because a lot of homeowners are elderly, so this, if this is allowed to go in, then we're gonna end up looking like Loganville, Lawrenceville, um, Gainesville, where the old homes and the historic section is no longer real people living, and great little towns need families and they need people to be there, and that's just not gonna do, and it, as far as having parking and it cannot, apparently, according to what they said at the planning thing, it wouldn't revert to residential, so it's just not very good, um, one of the other things is if it's such a great idea and that there was a tree that got destroyed in a storm about six, eight weeks ago now, and it has not been touched. So if you're gonna be a good property owner, whether you're putting a business in or whether you're gonna rent it out, you would've taken care of that tree by now, so, I mean, that doesn't sit well, but since other people are here, um, it's just, it just is, uh, families aren't gonna wanna go, if if that West Hightower starts going commercial, then the people who live there, our neighbors have just put in a swimming pool, and so I'm sure they plan to stay. Dana, uh, De- the the Bales, Johnson Bales there in, um, Florida, but I think they had called and talked to somebody on the council that they weren't in favor of that, and again, uh, Ms. Thomas that lives next door, she's elderly and she's not in favor, and some of the people, they just can't get out, but anyway, um, it's just, um, it this, that would, a business would be next to the school too, and that's not very great either, it needs to be residential, thank you.
Six minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Ogletree.
It's a six minute.
My name's Makin Ogletree, two five nine West Hightower Trail, and I just kinda wanna reiterate what my wife had said about it, uh, I think it's set of precedents if you start converting residential into commercial and mix it up. Uh, like, if people want to come in, visit, they want to come to historical residential areas, see the old homes and stuff, they wanna see the, you know, downtown business area too, but if you start breaking up, putting residential in, businesses in the same area and stuff, you know, create a precedent where people are like, well, it's what difference in between such circle and somebody in a place like Gainesville or whatever that you've seen change and stuff and the business going there, people don't go to Gainesville now and visit the downtown area, they go just, you know, business is that, pretty much. So I just wanted to put in my two cents worth there, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ogletree. Anyone else wishing to speak against?
Come on, dude.
My name's Victor Crowley, I live at one thirty West Hightower, and I'm speaking for Makin, or for, eh, for my neighbors, they couldn't be here, they had some previous commitment they had made. But they bought a nice house that was fixed up, paid over per value of it, and like they said, she li- works there primarily as her job at home. That could cause problems with her because she has to have silence at her job. And I'm concerned mainly also on what kind of traffic we're gonna get in hours of day this would be, because this could affect a lot of things for a lot of people. And as a person that's lived here most of my adult life, so I came here when I was about twenty-one years old, I've seen this town change, and the precedents you're looking at could be bad, cause if something like this goes in, my neighbors are already talking about they would sell and move. They don't really wanna be next to a business, and if they decide to sell, me and my mom might sell, so you're looking at two pa- properties coming open right next to it that could be a big zoning issue of big commercial property, that would be very valuable valuable for a commercial aspect. So just think of that when you decide what you wanna do with that, because I don't wanna be next to a business, that's like when Mr. Stevens wanted to put a convenience store at the gas station that was next to my house. That got pushed out, and I'm glad it did, cause could you imagine what it'd be like by now? Cause I mean, he don't take care of that property at all. Cause I've mentioned to the city workers about getting leaves up, they just pile them up in a corner and they get blown in my yard, and I'm constantly picking them up, trying to get them to the street so they get removed. So I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, um, anyone else?
Molly Kimmler, five 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 West Hightower Trail, and I've lived there since nineteen seventy-seven, and in the past, we have also fought this in the past where companies wanted to come in right past our house, wanting to put in a business, and we told them, no, they couldn't, I, it was, the city said, no, they couldn't. And so I think we need to leave our street alone, I think it needs to be residential as much as possible, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kimmler, anyone else? Okay, um, Dana, you do have some time in reserve if you'd like to rebut.
I just wanna say a couple words, uh, I appreciate Ms. Adrian, Victor, and Molly speaking, and, um, you know, Victor's neighbor can have a business, but she don't wanna be bothered with her business, so she doesn't want somebody else to have business, seems a little bit unfair, but, um, you know, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of traffic with a florist, a little boutique, um. I think that, I know everybody, change is hard, um, I realize that, but, you know, most of the people I've lived here twenty years plus, and this is a property that I own and a business that I would own myself, and so, um, and so, um, you know, a lot of, eh, there are other buildings in town, I'm not sure why the other buildings, other than, you know, the city is trying to help with some of those because of rents and things of that nature. Um, so, you know, I just would like the opportunity, and we all know that there is a drainage issue that has been there for years, um, we don't have any problem preparing site plans and what's needed in order to correct that. Um, we are adjacent to existing, and this is part of the future land use, and I'll just, uh, ask the, um, you know, council here to consider our request. Thank you.
Okay, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Oh, I got questions, um, first question is, we got three houses right here, why are they in the future as, when we're stating that we want to be walkability and livability, and we have houses that you can walk to town, but the future's saying that we want them to be commercial?
So, this, this character area of the future land use map is kind of, it's not a total catch-all, but there is multiple uses in there, so you kind of want some commercial sprinkled in with your residential, um, and, um, it, it encompasses, this, this future land use character area basically mirrors the historic district, so, um, that includes O and I zonings, business zonings, what used to be called the, uh, central business district zoning, um, and then also your R fifteen and R twenty-five zonings as well, so, um, i- it's just kind of a mixture of different uses, like it would kind of be, uh, historically, that your center area is going to kind of be your commercial, then going out and out is your residential.
I mean, if it's on me, I would make a motion to accept the planning and zoning recommendations.
Yep, I'd second that.
So, accepting planning and zoning recommendation as denial of the request?
Yes.
Alright, got a motion from Tyson and a second from Nathan, is there further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, Ashley. Will you go through the consent agenda for us, please?
So we have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. Um, item number one is the minutes of the mayor and council meeting from May twenty-first, item number two is the minutes of the executive session from May twenty-first, item number three is the minutes of the mayor and council called meeting on June the sixth, item number four is the minutes of the executive session from June the sixth, item number five is the minutes of the mayor and council work session from June the sixth, item number six is a bid award for, uh, Methodist Church Sewer Lateral Replacement, this will be going to the lowest responsive bidder, which is J J Enterprises LLC at a, uh, bid of thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and the last item on consent agenda is a retirement restatement of adoption agreement and general addendum, this is actually coming to us from our, uh, from G M A, uh, they are a retirement plan provider, uh, they've had to make some plan changes in order to stay, uh, within I R S requirements, and that requires us to readopt our, um, adoption agreement, or, or our, uh, retirement agreement, so recommend approval.
Yep. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion from Nathan and a second from Steve, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes. D D A, s- uh, the devel- Downtown Development Authority of Social Circle Board appointment. Um, you have, I think now, four applications for that, so I don't know if the council has had time to consider that, or if it's something we want to table.
I would recommend table them, because last time we said was getting applications, I still didn't see. Then I don't know what was happening.
Alright.
We got two business owners out of the last bunch that actually owns businesses downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, like I said, last time, because, you know, we talked about one, but I still never seen it, I do see the one.
The second one came in yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
Did it come out yesterday?
Yep. Alright Tyson, you making that motion to table to a date certain?
We can, we'll do it at the next council, maybe just time to look over, make a motion to table to the next council.
Okay. Have a motion from Tyson, second from Teresa, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alright, moving on to new business, uh, Ashley, is this you? Revision to the alcohol ordinance.
Okay, so, uh, the most recent revision that we received was the architectural renderings and the ordinance graphic for, from C P L, um, based off the feedback at the work session where we, um, discussed the different elevations that they, um, kind of put before us. Um, so this is the rendering that they came up based off of your guys' feedback, um, so, uh, Eric, if you go to the next slide, is the graphic in there? Okay, yeah. So, this graphic basically takes the information from the U D C and highlights all of it in a graphic form that we can, uh, put in the, in the, um, alcohol ordinance, um, so it just talks about, you know, the minimum parking requirements, the materials that would be required based off of the, um, rendering and what we ta- what we discussed, um, the square footage, the lighting plan, all that kind of good stuff. Um, so, th- these would be added into, um, the alcohol ordinance to show, um, whoever won the lottery, this is what you have to build, and this is what we want to see for our liquor store, or our package store, um.
Just to clarify, from the picture, the colors are not set for that, right?
No.
Okay.
No, we, we don't, again, we don't regulate color, so as long as it meets the material requirements, it can be pink, so.
That's what it looked like.
Why'd you choose pink?
No reason. Um, but, yeah, so, the, the color is not reflective of an end product.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, if I may add, there is language in the ordinance that if, if any applicant that wins it wants to deviate from this plan, they can come before you and ask that, and that is really put into place, because I think there's some, um, foresight that there are some existing buildings in town that may fit otherwise requirements, and so if they, if someone were to want to do those, they could come back and ask permission to deviate from this plan.
Okay.
So with that, um, this actually concludes a years-long review of the alcohol ordinance. Seven years?
Yeah, who's counting?
It's only been three as far as I know, yeah, so, uh, this is the last step, and, uh, so we're ready to move ahead with, with adoption of the alcohol ordinance, if you guys are ready.
Okay, waiting for a motion.
So move?
Second.
Alright, motion from Steve, take a second from Tyson, any further discussion?
Oh, just a question, why is the golf cart, is, are we telling them where they need to put the golf cart parking?
No, it's just a minimum requirement.
Alright.
Yeah.
Why is it at the front door? Alright.
Alright, other questions? Alright, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Revision to the nuisance ordinance.
Believe, uh, Mr. Crowley's going to handle that one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, this is a, a slight change to the current nuisance ordinance the city has, and if, if a private citizen wants to put in a nuisance request, it goes through the city manager, who then deems it to come before council or not, and so it, it keeps the nuisance in place for you all to be able to deem something a nuisance. If a private citizen were to, uh, complain about a nuisance, it would go through the city manager, he would then in his discretion, uh, bring it before city council as a nuisance or not.
So it's just put in the city manager in place where currently it goes directly?
As the gatekeeper, yes.
Okay. Alright, entertain a motion.
So move?
Second.
Alright, got a, a motion from Teresa, second from Steve, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is consideration of a resolution to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget, uh, it is my belief that that is simply, um, we won't have a public hearing on that, we've already held the public hearings, this will be to authorize the mayor to sign, uh, the resolution.
That is correct, uh, we have, uh, presented to the council, um, the last three or four, um, meetings of the governing body, uh, we've answered questions, um, we've, we've taken council suggestions throughout, and, uh, we've held the required budget hearing, and it is now, uh, time to adopt the budget and move ahead, so I'll have, um, Karen, uh, give a little bit of overview of what it is we're actually adopting tonight.
Alright, thank you, um, city manager, um, Eric, yes, as, um, mentioned, this is our F Y twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and we're basically here, we've gone through all the necessary steps, you've heard from all the different, um, departments, um, from the general fund, all the way over to our enterprise funds here, uh, we didn't go through the confiscated or the hotel motel spots, because they are what they are, um, the water fund, and then we have the gas fund, solid waste fund, so overall, all funds is forty-four million, eight forty-eight, six hundred, um, is what the F Y twenty-five budget comes up to, and so recommendation is to move forward with adoption of the F Y twenty-five budget as presented.
I'll entertain the motion for the mayor to sign that resolution. So move?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Nathan and a second from Teresa, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. I don't know of a need for an executive session, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, motion from Tyson, second from Steve, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.